Good evening, welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, February 21st, 2017. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh Canada." For anyone watching online or on the recording, you got nothing, but it sounded great in here as the council choir contributed "Oh Canada" this evening. And I want to thank our audience for their participation. Thank you very much. We'll move into the adoption of our previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt that set of minutes from February 6th? Councillor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, February 6th, 2017.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. Are there any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to correct before we adopt them? I don't see anybody ring in, so it looks like everything is in order and we can call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move to the adoption of the agenda. We have one additional agenda item for the council member that wants to move the adoption of the agenda. That was additional item 8.1, Appointments to Combative Sports Commission. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we council adopt the agenda with the addition of 8.1, Appointments to Combative Sports Commission Board.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any other discussion on the agenda as amended? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries as well. And this brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting. And from time to time, we'll use this as an opportunity to recognize events, initiatives, and organizations in our community by way of a proclamation. We have a special proclamation to make this evening in recognition of the Children's Wish Foundation. And so I'm going to make that proclamation, then we're going to invite some community members up to receive the proclamation. Whereas, in Alberta, Children's Wish is celebrating with the wish children, their families, as well as the donors, volunteers, and various stakeholders who turn wishes into reality. And whereas, the Children's Wish Foundation of Canada is the largest of all Canadian wish granting charities dedicated to granting wishes to Canadian children between the ages of three and 17 who are diagnosed with life-threatening illnesses. And whereas, for more than 30 years, Children's Wish has worked tirelessly to grant heartfelt wishes to nearly 25,000 children and their families. Therefore, I, Bill Given, Mayor of the City of Grand Prairie, Alberta, do hereby proclaim March 2017 as Wish Month in the community of Grand Prairie. From trips to Disneyland, to barrel racing, to meeting Selena Gomez, Children's Wish mandate is to never deny any eligible child their most heartfelt wish. I just want to recognize that today, we have in attendance Brianna, her mom Lindsay, her sisters Jade and Zoe, who are here to recognize the contribution that Children's Wish has made to communities, or to families in our community. And they've agreed to come forward and receive this proclamation on behalf of the Children's Wish Foundation. Ladies, we, oh wow, there's my tie clip, by the way. You can zoom out a little bit. Ladies, we certainly appreciate you being here tonight to help us recognize the work that the Children's Wish Foundation does across Canada, but also here in Grand Prairie. It's obviously an important organization that's close to your hearts and the hearts of many Canadians. I want to say that I'm sure that nobody's wish was ever to come to a city council meeting, but we appreciate the fact that you did come anyhow. Thanks very much for being here, ladies. In this delegation portion of our agenda is also a regular opportunity for anybody in the community who wished to come forward and address council on any community-related matter to do so. And I believe we had one guest that had let us know ahead of time, Mr. Walter Andreef with Métis Local 1990. Mr. Andreef.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship, Bill Given, city council members, and everyone in attendance. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you on behalf of Grand Prairie Métis Local 1990. My name is Walter Andreef, I'm Vice President of Métis Local 1990. And Angie wasn't able to make it today, but she sends her apologies that she couldn't be here tonight as she had a serious family emergency this week and that required her attention to be somewhere else. I was asked by Angie to come and speak to you tonight on behalf of our Board of Directors and the Métis community. And most of our council here has, at one time or another, met with Angie or attended some of our events here in the city. And we, again, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you here today. And I've been instructed to ask three questions of council tonight. We are asking these questions because Métis Local 1990 has been working on a project involving the planning and fundraising for the construction of a new elders' caring shelter, too. I'm here to request the support of the City of Grand Prairie to assist us in our vision of creating a seniors' living space for poor and impoverished Indigenous and non-Indigenous seniors. And this would be people who would be First Nations, Métis, or non-status, and some who aren't even Indigenous. We have been doing this since 2003, and we've been doing it very well at the current elders' caring shelter. Recently, we have become aware of a provincial government and federal government program for funding municipal projects that will offer inclusion for Indigenous groups such as the Métis to participate. It's called the ICF program, which is also known as the Intermunicipal Collaborative Framework. And I understand that they still haven't been putting together the regulations, but we'd like to get in early and be involved in some way. So my first ask would be, we would like to request the City of Grand Prairie to include our Métis local organization in discussions with the provincial government, and request that the city write a letter to the town of Sexsmith, who is the city's current partner, to request that we be included as a partner and participant in meetings regarding the ICF and other such local initiatives. Number two, we understand the City of Grand Prairie has been undertaking internal discussions on a development plan for the future use of a block of city land in the Smiths subdivision. Our Métis local would like to be included in correspondence and invited to meetings. We think this location may be a potential spot for our elders', our proposed elders' caring shelter, too. And the third request is, our Métis local is primarily a volunteer-based organization. Despite those challenges, we have continued to support and operate the current elders' caring shelter since it first opened in 2003, and the facility has housed over 15 seniors since opening day, and we will continue to operate it. We have the current need to hire a project manager who will be exercised to carry out the planning, design, and other work of the proposed elders' caring shelter as soon as possible, and to work off of this business plan that we developed here last year. We ask, request the city to provide us with some funding opportunities that will be leveraged with other funds to hire the right person for this, we think is very important, multi-year job and meeting the challenges of the Aboriginal community here in Grand Prairie. That kind of concludes my presentation, and I'm now open to any questions if anyone has any.
Thanks very much, Mr. Andreef. Any questions for Mr. Andreef? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question on the ICFs. I'm glad you brought it forward because me and Councillor Rice were in Edmonton, and I think last and the week before, Councillor Clayton was in Calgary for emergency trends that is happening with the municipal government. And one of the issues they brought up forward is about working better with Aboriginal groups and Métis, and maybe having them included in your ICF discussions. So I'm glad you come forward to ask it, because this could be the trend within a year or two, and regulations, they're looking at 2019, so thank you, Walter, for coming forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the delegation? Councillor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thank you very much, Walter, for coming on in and asking your requests and informing us what's going on. Questions in regards to the new elders' caring shelter that hopefully soon we'll start breaking ground on? Do you have any private partnerships currently involved with the creation of a new elders' caring shelter as well?
We do not at the present time. One of the concepts of our business plan is to bring in service organizations that will be there to assist seniors, not only for the seniors who will be in the residence, but anyone in the general area. We're kind of hoping one floor of the building will be used for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to bring one forward, too, and I think the ICFs is not like IDPs, which are going to become mandatory through the emergency trends, instead of not mandatory. And one of them was that we're looking at servicing levels and how maybe MD, Greenview areas, and all the development happening, and within the county linear assessment, and so much money being pooled and not coming in and helping some of the city residents helping to work in these areas. So I think there's great discussions going to happen down the road. And so my question is, there's a lot of individuals that come for your shelter, your first shelter, I guess. I don't know, can't remember the name you called the shelter.
The loose-carrying shelter.
Yeah, and I forgot there. And so, but the thing is, from all over, you have people from Aboriginal, from, it could be from MD, Greenview, Grand Cash, from all over, Yellowknife, everywhere.
Kelly Lake, Fort St. John, parts like Slave Lake, other places. So people, people come there to live and also attend the hospital. If they got to come in for a, you know, a health reason, and they need a place to stay temporarily while they're going through months or several weeks, that's, it really helps to facilitate that if there's a bed open. And there's a criteria for staying there and everything else, and, you know, we've been managing that since 2003. But we're very inclusive as a community, and we work with, we work with all nations and all people to help ensure that our seniors are cared for in the way they need to be respected.
My final two questions. One, I'm pretty sure, because you had a burning of the mortgage, it's paid, since sales is ready, your mortgage is paid on the first shelter?
Well, that is, that is correct. And thanks to the generous donations and the support, actually, of the city over many, many years, that's helped us to be able to pay off our mortgage. And as well, just recently, I'll say in the last, in the last month, at the federal level, the Métis Nation has signed an agreement with the federal government for enacting a process for reconciliation. And so that was as recent as January 31st. And on February 2nd, the Métis Nation of Alberta, who is our head organization here in Alberta, just signed a framework, a 10-year framework agreement with the provincial government that supports services and expenditures in several different areas. So that, so we're really starting to get moving as a, as a community, both locally and provincially and nationwide.
My final question, so 13 years you paid your mortgage off, that speaks to itself. Are you fully full at your shelter now? Is it full, like pretty, quite a few individuals there?
Well, we, we have room for about 16 individuals, and some days, some months, the people leave early, some, some come in early. So I'm going to say right now, I believe we're about seven-eighths full. I think we may be missing a few people, but I don't really, I don't really know the operational aspect of it. That's just what I know from the last time I visited there.
Thank you, Walter.
About two weeks ago.
Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else in the queue. And so the, so our delegation business typically happens at the very end of our council agenda. And a typical approach with a request like this would be refer back to the appropriate standing committee, so we can have administration do some work on it and bring back some updates. So just so that you know what's most likely to happen at the end of the council meeting, that we can either choose to stay if you want to and see all the exciting action at council, or you could just sort of watch online once you got home, too. I don't see any other questions in the queue. Mr. Andreef, thanks very much for being here tonight and for sharing, for raising those three priority issues for you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and all your support over the years.
So as I mentioned, this delegation portion of our meeting happens at every regular city council meeting. You don't have to have let us know ahead of time that you wish to appear before council. So community members are welcome to come forward. It's just one of the ways that you can contact city council, either by phone, email, social media, or right here in person in the council chambers. And I don't see anybody else that was looking to come forward tonight. I don't see anybody making a move to the, towards the front council table. So I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda with that reminder that it is available to the community. And we'll move on to public hearings. We'll launch into item 6.1, the Public Hearing on the Northwest Area Structure Plan Amendment by law C 1106-07. I'll call this public hearing to order and look for an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Administration has initiated an amendment to the Northwest Area Structure Plan. The amendment would change map six by removing the reference to the proposed road closure of the airport access road at Highway 43, would reinsert collector road arrows between Area 1 and the West Gate West area, which were erroneously deleted from a previous amendment. It would add text to Section 513 related to number two about the collector road arrows, and it would delete corresponding obsolete text in Section 5011 related to the transportation network. With respect to the proposed road closure, the transportation master plan makes no reference to the closure of this road. The road on the opposite side of the highway is 124th Street, which is a future arterial road. The area, the intersection is signalized, and therefore, there's no expectation that that access would ever actually be closed, and therefore, we're recommending that it be removed for clarity purposes. With respect to reinserting the collector road arrows in the area structure plan, in the Northwest Area Structure Plan, the area structure plan is consistent with the West Gate area structure plan, which is shown on your screen. The arrows to the north, this area is directly south of the, of the subject quarter, and the arrows correspond to each other on the adjacent properties for consistency between the area structure plans, which was required by the Municipal Government Act. The change is also consistent with the West Gate West outline plan. The dashed black lines are the collector roads that exist in West Gate West, and they will connect to the airport quarter section to the north that is the subject of this amendment. With respect to the land use bylaw, it will not be affected whatsoever by this amendment. So in conclusion, with respect to the intersection of Highway 43, again, there is no, no one envisions that that intersection would be closed, therefore, we're recommending that the area structure plan reference to it be deleted. With respect to the first paragraph in 511, that paragraph was inserted into the Northwest Area Structure Plan a couple of years ago when the transportation network in the ASP was uncertain. As a result of that uncertainty, administration did a transportation study for that entire area. Council adopted a transportation and a network for the area, and that was inserted into the area structure plan. And therefore, the language saying that the, that the transportation network is uncertain can now be removed. And finally, the West Gate Area Structure Plan and the West Gate West Outline Plan both show the future collector roads connecting into the quarter section to the north, and for consistency, we are recommending that those connections be reestablished into the area structure plan. So we are recommending that council give this amendment first, second, and third reading. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Walton. Before we open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, are there any questions for administration at this time from council? Council, any questions for administration? Councillor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Dan, just a quick question in regards to your engagement. Now, it says that in your stakeholder engagement section of the reports that you talked with the Airport Commission, and that you did everything according to our bylaws and MGA. I was just wondering what, what the attendance was like at the events, and if you received any negative responses or positive responses?
Through the mayor, the, we did not receive any responses whatsoever with respect to the advertising that we did. Administration, not myself, but department managers, met personally with the airport administration, had a discussion about their, about this access and their future access plans, and they did not express any concerns or reservations regarding any of these changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councillor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Dan, could you just let us know whether, since this is in such close proximity to the airport, is there any requirement that NavCanada is contacted in regards to any of the land use changes here?
Mr. Walton.
Through the mayor, the, I think the general procedure that is used with respect to any development that might affect the airport is as we circulate notification to the airport, and then they pass it on to NavCanada. So anything that, anything that we would pass on to these folks, they would have passed on to NavCanada if it was something that they thought NavCanada had any specific concern about. I don't think that this was one of them, but that's generally, that's generally the procedure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Walton. Okay, so with that round of questions done, and there will be another round before we close the public hearing council if anything arises, I would open for presentation submission. Is there anyone here tonight that wished to make a presentation with regard to these amendments to the Northwest Area Structure Plan? Is there anyone here to speak with respect to the Northwest Area Structure Plan amendments? I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll ask one last time before I close the presentation submission portion of this public hearing. Is there anyone who wished to speak to these proposed amendments to the Northwest Area Structure Plan? Seeing no one, I'll ask, I will close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Council, any final questions? I don't see any, so we'll move on to business arising. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give first reading to bylaw C 1106-07, being an amendment to the Northwest Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion, excuse me, no discussion or debate on first reading? I just about got ahead of myself there. Please vote for first reading on bylaw C 1106-07. Thank you, that motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council give second reading to bylaw C 1106-07.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Quick question to Dan about mobility and individuals further north of this that may want to come down and walk. What chances are they going to have? I can't really see in the map too well unless I'm not looking at the right map of getting around and getting to point A to point B, because right now, they just basically have to be on the road unless I'm wrong. Can you answer that mobility for?
Councillor McLean. This is an opportunity to discuss and debate the motion for second reading. The opportunity to ask questions of administration during a public hearing is during that presentation submission portion where I give council the opportunity. The reason that we do that is because if there is additional information that somebody wished to debate or discuss, if there's a member of the public, although we don't have any here, that they would need to have that opportunity to have it.
Does it do any harm to ask it?
There's a reason why we have a procedure bylaw that says how public hearings are intended to run. That's why I asked a couple of times during that period where we can't ask questions.
Thank you.
Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C 1106-07 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote on having third reading. In order to have all three readings at the same council meeting, this motion must pass unanimously, and it does not. And so administration will attend at a future council meeting to be here for third and final reading. We'll move on to unfinished business, which we have none. And that would take us to item 8.1, our additional agenda item, Combative Sports Commission Appointments. Someone that's ready to make a motion with respect to those appointments, Councillor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will move that council appoint Mr. Brett Anderson and Ms. Emily Schultz to the Combative Sports Commission for a term ending December 8, December 2018.
Thanks very much, Councillor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, I was just wondering if we wanted to put the date on there, December 31st, 2018?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Catch. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And I think that handled all of our items under reports, and would take us to 9.1, the Arts Development Committee, from February 2nd. Councillor Clayton, was that your set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes from the Arts Development Committee meeting held Thursday, February 2nd, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the contents of those minutes? Does everything look like it's in place? Okay. I don't see anybody ringing in, so there must be. Oh, Councillor Logan, did you see something in the minutes?
Yes, I just come in, oh, I'm sorry, it's not on the minutes. It was just a quick comment about how blustery the day must have been there because we lost a couple of the members of the committee from, due to the cold.
Sure have.
So that was, Doreen Lacouste, for sure, is one of those examples, and sent her regrets.
Okay. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And it must have been the cold because we had three councils, one public member, and the other three public members weren't there. So I'm just wondering if this has been reflective in other committees, maybe not, but we were missing three public members for that vote, and maybe it was the cold weather, but hopefully it's not a trend.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. So if there's nothing else on the contents of the minutes, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Councillor Clayton, anything you wanted to highlight from that?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Given. It was a very thorough meeting. Arts development typically has about, or has exactly $70,000 available for festival funding. Approximately $68,000 of it was distributed to funding various festivals in the area, as well as $3,000 for major projects, and $1,800 of that was spent. So there was numerous great events that are being supported, and they're all in the minutes. But one of the highlights, the Bear Creek Music, Bear Creek Folk Festival, received maximum amount of $14,000. And there's a few new events in there as well, so if anybody had any questions, but otherwise, all the events are listed.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. So we'll move on to, oh, Councillor O'Toole, question?
Yes, thank you very much. I was just wondering how many applications that you got for that $70,000?
I'm going to say, hang on a sec here, I feel approximately 17. It was, it was the largest amount of applications administration had seen, so.
Okay, just another question, if you don't mind. When was the last time that, that amount of money, the $70,000, was bumped up?
So from the discussion we had at the meeting that day, it hasn't been increased in a while. However, in the past, it seems to take two application processes to spend the money. This time, all the money was spent early on in the year. So administration did discuss the opportunity that they will look at for budgeting potentially more festival funding. However, with council being aware of the fact that there is a large festival event funding policy coming forward, this may change some of the criteria for some of these festivals that have applied.
Just a comment, I think there were some events there that probably could have used some funding that would have been new to the city, and I would really like to see an opportunity for anybody that tries to put an event on, have some funding source. And obviously, we're running short there, so just an opinion, and take it for consideration.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And I'll just add to Councillor Clayton's comments that we did make a caveat on a couple of the funding requests that, funds that were given for a couple of the larger festivals, that should they get funding, you know, future grant funding through the large-scale tourism events policy, and if there's any money allocated to that, that the funding would be taken away from, from them in terms of the arts development, and so that there would free up some more dollars for some of the smaller festivals.
Thanks, Councillor Tarrant. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Maybe the director of community living, I believe, I don't know if arts falls under there. Didn't we free up money, 20,000 boys choir downtown amusement or street performers? We took 20 or 30 grand and we spared up, so maybe we didn't include or add to it, as Councillor Clayton, but we did free up a lot of money a couple of years ago. Am I right in that conclusion?
Director Roth.
Through the mayor, certainly, there were a number of community groups that were moved to an operational budget because they did provide an operational service in representing the city at various functions. And so there were some that were moved to operational budget line items, so they wouldn't necessarily be applying for festival funding. And so there were some that were moved to operational budget line items, so they wouldn't be necessarily be applying for festival funding.
I think among those were the Grand Prairie Boys Choir, as was highlighted by Counsel McLean, which is in line with the Grand Prairie Marching Band, which represent the city at a number of different community events like Remembrance Day or regional parades. Although off the top of my head, I don't remember any others. If, street performers? Oh, thank you. Yeah, let's move to an operational. Yeah, thank you. Okay. If that was everything on arts development, we had voted, I think, already to receive that set of minutes. And so we're on to 9.2, which is also Counselor Clayton with the Community Growth Committee meeting from February 7th.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel approve the, or receive the minutes for the Community Growth Meeting held Tuesday, February 7th as presented.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nobody in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Clayton.
Thank you. I would move counsel approve the amendments to the Policy 316, the Downtown Incentives Program. Speaking to that, the information is included. However, a brief overview of the changes are in, now include a demolition grant. Currently, the Downtown Incentive Programs has three criteria grants, a facade improvement, an urban residential grant, and a patio grant. This would add one more opportunity for people and to develop our downtown area. The maximum amount is $50,000. And it, it can include some remediation of land and demolition of contaminated buildings, et cetera. And committee was optimistic that this will just be one additional item to improve some of the great things that are happening already with the other initiatives.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Clayton.
I move that counsel approve the, the issuance of a request for proposal for the sale of the former York Hotel and/or Jermaine Park properties, including the development and scoring criteria as attached. It is, council has it in front of them, and it was presented at Community Growth. If there's any questions in regards to the actual criteria, I'm sure administration would be happy to answer those.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question in regards to, in the past, when we had proposal out for this land, we had it as an RFI, Request for Information. I see now it's a Request for Proposal. Just wondering if that's just semantics or if that's, if there's an actual, you know, more of the specifications provided within that.
Sure, I'll maybe direct that to our Economic Development Manager, Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The initial process that we used for this particular piece of land was an RFI, Request for Information. That was a little bit of a cumbersome process in order to sell land. So the last process that we used, when we were working with DevCo, or sorry, when we were working with the school board, was an RFP. So this is the same as the last process that we issued for the York Jermaine site.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Mr. Glavine. Any other questions, comments, discussion or debate on this motion? Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Mr. Glavine, just in the criteria, the scoring criteria of it all, there's a price and economic impact and density. Now currently, we have, as we just approved our Downtown Incentives Program to increase density sizes and to help pay off certain amounts. Has it been discussed that there's a potential that price and, and the, well, the price and the density could be counter to each other? And it really depends on when we're putting out the Request for Proposal, whether or not the proposed developer may or may not be aware of the Downtown Incentive Program. And that could directly affect their price. So someone who's aware might put up a higher price and someone who's not aware, you know, might put up that higher price and not know to, to get that. So I just, I wonder if there was some consideration put in for our Downtown Incentives Program and the pricing of it? Because they definitely affect each other. It's a hard question, I know. I was trying to.
Well, so Counsel Thiessen, are you, are you asking about the correlation in the scoring criteria between price and design in terms of the points awarded for either? Or are you, are you asking whether somebody?
Price and density.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, price and density, excuse me. Are you asking whether the, is it about the points that are there? Or is it about whether a project that may come forward would have access to the Downtown Incentive Program as well?
Well, I think we've, we've done a fair job of advertising it. I just, part of it is, is if a builder who has experience comes in and sets a certain price, well, I can build you this and this is what we want to do. And isn't aware of the density, I guess, grants that we are going to be given through the Downtown Incentive Program. That may affect their proposal price, right? So they could score lower on the price because they're like, well, we'll build for this much or we'll pay for the property for this much. Not being aware that they could actually get a discount on top of it by increasing the density of the build. So that was my, that was, I was trying to find a question to, to fit in there. But for me, I'm kind of torn because it really is how we put it out in the proposal to the public who's going to, like, obviously build a proposal around this. That could affect their overall price in the end, and it might mean somebody not getting the, the land in the building versus someone getting it who is aware. So I just, my, my question really is, is was there consideration put in to the pricing and the criteria that as we laid it out? With keeping in mind the Downtown Incentives Program and how that might affect how people price out their proposals.
Give us. Mr. Glavine?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think if I understand you correctly, you're concerned that if someone isn't aware of the program, that they might underbid on the land, which then could cause them to score lower. I think we can mitigate that risk just by, in our advertising for the RFP, ensuring that we're jointly promoting both programs, both the RFP and the Downtown Incentives.
Beautiful. Cool, that's the answer I was looking for. Thanks so much.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Brian, just a quick question. This passes tonight. How quickly, what's the schedule for like, okay, it goes out and you got so much time to bid on it? And hopefully have someone to build on that empty nest there for, I don't know how many years.
Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Our intent is to have the RFP out by the end of next week, which I believe Thursday it would be issued. And then it would be open for approximately two months. So by the beginning of May, we should be able to evaluate the proponents. We would like to have it open at least two months to ensure people have time to do their due diligence on the property as well as submit the designs and the renderings we would like to see in order to evaluate the projects.
Thanks very much, Mr. Glavine. I wasn't able to be at the committee meeting that this was discussed at, but when I look at the scoring criteria. I wonder if it accurately reflects council's priorities in the different areas. For me, I've always maintained out in the community and any potential suitors for the property, that council's interest is mainly in the, in, in two things. The activity that can be generated on, on the site. And that would, you know, sort of really show up mostly in density. And then the economic impact, you know, in terms of increasing the property value and the long-term property taxes that would be paid by any new development there. So it seems like the economic impact really captures that property tax uplift portion. I wonder though if density, which is sort of a stand-in for activity generation in the downtown, is, is underweighted. For me, I almost, I would be supportive of seeing density have a 20-point, be a 20-point category and price be the 10-point. And this really is about what priorities? Is it how much money we can get for the property today? Is that where we place our emphasis? Or is it on increasing the density and activity in the downtown core? So that's, that's where I would prefer to see the weighting. Certainly, I think this is within council's purview before we put it there, because it's really about making a decision between two different things. Do we want to get a smaller amount of money upfront? And a larger density that generates more activity downtown? Or a, a larger amount of money and potentially a smaller building? Because that's, that's how I understand this weighting criteria to be set up somewhat. Counsel Clayton?
Sorry, did, did Mr. Glavine want to comment on your comments first?
That was, that was, well, I, I, that was really to counsel. Mr. Glavine, would my characterization of sort of the weighting between density and price be accurate? Like, there's, there's a greater, in this scoring criteria, there's a greater emphasis placed on price than there is on density? Is that correct?
That's correct. The rationale behind the 20 points was through our purchasing department, as that is the lowest administratively we can put on any sort of purchasing. So in this case, we went to the minimum. However, obviously, as counsel, you could vary.
Sure, so, so I'd submit to counsel that this is significantly different than any sort of purchasing thing. This is really about long-term benefit to the community rather than short-term financial gain to the city. Counsel Clayton, did you have?
Yeah, I just had another comment in regards to the mayor's comments. I, I think with the development criterion as well, with, with the economic impact being weighted so heavy, that it'll counterbalance the density concerns. So I appreciate Mr. Glavine's comments, but the density piece, I think, well, I'm optimistic that it's sort of covered in the, in the criterion as well as the weight with the economic impact, so.
Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, I think I'm right on point with you as far as price and density. Up until recently, we were giving the land away as per the criteria that we laid out to the community and price wasn't any kind of objective for the city. We just wanted to see the land developed on. And I, I know that part of, part of my promise to the citizens of Grand Prairie is that we're going to have a vibrant, densified urban core. And I really feel like if we sacrifice density for price, at the end of the day, we're just going to end up with a four-story building. And we're not going to increase the density as we wish, and we're going to encourage more of that type of development. This is prime real estate, and I think we should get what we want out of it, or at least try to get the best of what we want out of it. So I'd be in support of a change.
Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd be very nervous about the change. We know there's no parking bylaw downtown. We can build a density building and have, build 40 units and have 20 for parking. Then we might have to pay for a parkade. The pricing means an awful lot. And if you change the density a certain way, that's what you might get. And this plays a lot of role, how you might debate this. And you can make our downtown look, make it look really nice, or you can make it look, I don't want to go downtown. So I wouldn't support it.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. I don't see anybody proposing any amendments. If there are none coming, then, Counsel Thiessen?
I'll be so kind as to propose an amendment to the, the change in the evaluation criteria to drop the price point evaluation to 10 and the density, I'll raise that to 20. Just swap values.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. That motion's amendment is in order. Any discussion or debate on that amendment? Counsel Clayton?
Sorry, did I miss something? Didn't Mr. Glavine just explain that the price is at the minimum it can be? How can you reduce it?
Mr. Glavine said that administration's latitude, the lowest that they can go is 20%.
But council can make it lower?
Council can make it lower. Correct. That's what Mr.
So if I can continue, is that right? Speaking in, against, in opposition to this motion, I think that it's important for us to value our land. And there's a great opportunity here. I think that the other weighted criteria, especially with the 40% at economic impact, will outweigh the future benefits that this density project will bring. The incentives program downtown, it weighs heavily on density. So I mean, somebody is going to be in the best interest to make this, this project more dense. And with the economic impact being at 40%, I think that the criteria is good where it's at.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Counsel O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd just like to echo the same comments as Counsel Clayton. I, I think when we do that economic impact evaluation, there should be some lines in there that would reflect to the density. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. I'd just say, in support of the amendment, although economic impact, there may be some correlation there. I don't think it's a slam dunk necessarily. Certainly, there are different constructions methods. If one was a steel frame concrete building that's smaller, it could potentially be more expensive than something that's taller and a different style of construction. So that's, that's my primary concern. And I would hate to see a, a larger building that increases density and meets all those other criteria lose out by a, a couple of points, which we've seen when we've evaluated RFPs in the past, where a couple of points here or there can make a big difference. But that's why I would support the amendment and would encourage other council members to do so as well. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote on Counsel Thiessen's amendment to the scoring criteria. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, and so we'll vote on the main motion unamended. Any discussion or debate on the main motion unamended? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton, was there anything else from that set of minutes that you wanted to highlight for us?
No, Mayor Given, the rest of the meeting was pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. That'll take us to the Community Safety Committee meeting from February 14th. I think that's Counselor Thiessen's set of minutes, is it not?
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held Tuesday, February 14th, Valentine's Day, 2017 as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thiessen?
We got a few motions coming out of here. I'm going to speak to the next four because they're all pretty relevant to each other. They're all time extension requests. I will explain where, the area and stuff. But basically, their request to extend the, the time period for subdivision was, was meant by all parties. Due to the, the, I guess, the decline in our, in our current economic status and the slow movement of the housing market. So that's why all these developers have asked for time extensions. And saying that, I will move forward with the first one. I would move that counsel approve the request to extend the period for subdivision registration for one year to January 29th, 2018 for subdivision Z. 14-0031. This is in the Southview neighborhood, just subdividing the IGA residential and commercial lots between each other. They just asked for a one-year extension.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on this first time extension request? Discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel approve the request to extend the period for subdivision registration for one year to January 29th, 2018 for subdivision Z. 14-0034. Again, due to the depressed economic conditions and slow housing market. This is a parcel of land that's adjacent to the corner of 90th Street along 100th Avenue in the Cobblestone area.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on this time extension request? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion requires, carries, Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel approve the request to extend the period for subdivision registration for one year to January 29th, 2018 for subdivision Z. 14-0035. Again, for the same reasons I stated before. This is a parcel of land that is south of the Grand Banks area in, I'm trying to remember the neighborhood, south, south of Grand Banks here. Stone Ridge, I believe it is.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on this set of minutes? Or sorry, on this subdivision time extension request? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thiessen, I think you got one of those left.
One more. All right, I would move that counsel approve the request to extend the period for subdivision registration for one year to February 23rd, 2018 for subdivision Z. 14-0038. Again, as for the depressed economic conditions, this is a parcel southeast of Mother Teresa School in the countryside north area, otherwise known as Signature Falls.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on this time extension request? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thiessen, you had one piece of business that wasn't a time extension request.
Yeah, it was exciting, actually. We flew through that committee meeting. This is for tender on our crushing program for 2017. So I would move that counsel award tender T. 10-552-17 to Double D Contracting and Construction Limited at a unit cost of $8.40 per metric ton to a maximum amount of $500,000 exclusive of GST as the lowest meeting city specifications. Just to speak to this, this is part of our cost reductions in creating asphalt by crushing all the old material of asphalt. The tenders came in at significant cost savings compared to what it would cost us for new asphalt, almost half of what that cost would be, and a considerable cost savings on this tender compared with what we've received in previous tenders, to the tune of about $2 to $4 per ton, so.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Discussion and debate, Counsel Terren?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question on that. So the budgeted amount has not changed, is that correct? So the $500,000 was in the budget, so it just means that we're able to crush more under the same amount?
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. This is actually to, just to clarify, it's for two years, for 2017 and 2018, as part of our budget cycle. We just threw it all into one so that, as you recall, a budget, we had reduced the amounts to 200 or to 500,000 total, so 250,000 for each of these next two years. So this is to do all that work.
Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question. It's also crushing concrete. Is this the same contract to crush the concrete at that site? My question is, we utilize all that, didn't we, Director Astro? There's not a truckload left of the pile we had there from previous year.
Director Glonte?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this case, we bundled two years into one, so 2016 and 17 amounts with stockpile materials for the last year, in addition to the 2017 capital project. So during April, we're going to crush this material, and it's going to be used for the trail system as granular base. In the past, we have used this material for road stabilization, but we detected some rebar as part of the materials. So we're going to switch the uses just for granular base for the trail system.
And to finish up my question, I don't think we have a truckload left. There was a huge mountain pile, and I don't see any there now.
See, administration's saying that's correct, so we are getting good use out of our concrete recycling program. Excellent. Counsel Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The other positive about this award, I noted that it's to a maximum of, so we will just crush the amount that we're going to use. We don't have to spend the $500,000. Depends on our need.
Thanks, Counsel Adburn.
Thanks, Ed.
See any other council members in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thiessen, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
A couple of things I'd like to highlight. We had just a quick verbal update on parking downtown and loading zones as to a delegation that had come in. That situation has been dealt with to date. Counsel Rice brought forward a request for reports on the crushing program to see if we could have crushed glass as base for road. So that will be coming to a Community Safety Committee meeting near you here fairly soon. Also, Counsel O'Toole, another member of our committee, brought forward a request to review speed limits in residential zones. So we will be receiving a report on that. And finally, we also received two letters of correspondence, one from Peace Wapiti Academy in regards to the lights at 116th. And anyways, we've discussed this thoroughly. We received that letter for information. And the other one was a letter we received from the county for the ultimate design of the interchange along Highway 43, actually intersecting Highway 43. Committee chose to take no action on that one as well and received that letter for information.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Counsel O'Toole, you had a question or comment?
Yes, this goes back to 9.2.2, the York-Germain land development request. I did during this debate argue to leave the ratios, the points, as they were. And during the vote, I voted to vote positive for it. And so I want the record to show that I am vote not in favor of the amendment. So I would have spoke quicker, but you were pretty fast on the mic there, so.
Okay.
It doesn't change the vote. It just, it just, it just.
So would you like to request a revote then on that item?
Sure.
Okay. Sure. Want to make sure that everybody's votes are.
Well, I'm going to.
Okay, so Counsel O'Toole's asked for a revote on item 9.2.2. That happens from time to time. The buttons yes and no are very close together, and it does happen from time to time. But we certainly want to ensure that the record shows how each council member had intended to vote. And so by all means, we'll call for the vote on item 9.2.2 on the amendment. Okay, so, you know, yeah, sorry, Counsel O'Toole, I don't, because then we'd have to revote on the amendment and then revote on the main motion. So, sorry, no. When the amendment failed, we were on to the main motion, and you were able to vote for the main motion. So, sorry. So your point's been recorded, but rather than revoting on two motions as a courtesy, to no effect. No worries, no worries. But we'll move on and try to make sure to catch that. If that does happen, by all means, council members, feel free to wave and wave your arms flat and signal or turn on your microphone or something like that to catch my attention. But we will move on. I think that handles all of our committee business. I don't think we had any items of correspondence this evening, but we did have delegations. Obviously, our proclamation with respect to Wish Month sort of handled that delegation business. But we also had the delegation of Mr. Andreeff from Meti Local 1990. Could we perhaps have a motion of referral to administration or to the appropriate standing committee on those items that he'd requested? Counsel Rice?
I would move that we refer the request from Treaty 8 to the.
From Meti Local 1990?
Sorry, Meti Local, to the appropriate committee.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? There were three requests. Administration will have captured those from the meeting. And this will ensure that administration has appropriate time to be able to research any status related to those items and be able to provide an update to committee. So we'll have more information to work from. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that handles all of our delegation business. We have no notices of motion this evening. And so we'll move on to council member reports, and we'll start off with Senator 2000 Board and Counselor Rice. Just have to turn your microphone on there, I think, Counsel Rice.
Yes, we had a Senator 2000 Board meeting, and leases that are expiring are being dealt with. Everything seems to be on track there. There are no big problems. And I think there has been incredible cooperation with the city in terms of maintenance of the facility, as well as the improvements that are done annually to keep the facility. So no major work has to be done as a surprise. I think everything is going well there.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region, Counsel O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. We did meet last week. We were in the new facility on the third floor in 214. And we had a huge number of members show up to that meeting. And we had discussed a number of things, that funding sources, that the Community Futures could get funding for to supply some of the demands in this peace country. This, I said it before, that this Grand Prairie area, Community Futures is one of probably the top lenders in the province up here. And we do partner with other Community Futures, and we have been looking at partnering again on some projects coming up. So, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. I'll move on to Grand Prairie Airport Commission. I think that's you, again, Counsel Rice. It's like we're playing volleyball or ping pong back and forth.
So we had a Grand Prairie Airport Commission meeting, and I would just like to report the 2016 year-end passenger movements at the Grand Prairie Airport, 388,941, which is a huge number of people in, you consider our population. There were 37,694 landings and takeoffs, so again, a huge number for an area of our size. And we're starting to get some preliminary 2017 flight schedules for Air Canada. And we have our fingers crossed at this time that the early morning departure to Edmonton will be returned. So we'll keep watching that with our fingers crossed. So good news coming from the airport, and we were pleased to welcome both the city manager and the director of finance at that meeting. So I don't know if that meant they thought we were doing something right or something wrong, but it was nice to have both of them there.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Counsel Rice, do you know, just out of curiosity, on the flight schedules, is there a typical time of the year where the airlines make those announcements, or is it sort of variable?
It's variable. It'll come about in, I'll say, late spring and again, late fall as they start to introduce the schedules.
Great. Thanks very much. Thanks for the update. Grand Prairie Public Library Board, Counsel Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is just a few highlights from our February 14th Board meeting. We received our library director, Maureen Currie's performance review summary. And I'm pleased to say that, based on board and manager input, she's doing an excellent job, and we're very pleased with her work. Secondly, she presented a provincial annual report that we received for information by board motion and then is sent into the province. Our audited financial statements will be received by the board at our March meeting. And finally, we had our board, annual board elections, and Susan Banzgrove is the chair, Mark Evans, the vice chair. And we have three committees, finance, human resources, and planning. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counsel Adburn. Counsel Rice, did you have a question for?
Heard, Counsel Adburn, that the increase in membership since they've eliminated the library card fee are just absolutely incredible. It's like a huge number.
Yes, early indications are exactly that. From point of time this year versus last year, it's a huge increase. And I think Maureen will be coming to commit at some point to share some of that information.
Thanks very much, Counsel Adburn and Counsel Rice for asking the question. Next up, I think we have Counsel Thiessen for three in a row, starting off with the Grand Prairie Youth Council. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yes, I met with a small group of Grand Prairie's youth council on February 15th in the Community Social Development Boardroom. The purpose of the meeting was really to discuss governance structure, to review what council does, how things operate in the committee setting and in the council setting, and an opportunity for youth council to learn. And really, to try to capture that, they wanted to know more about the functions of the city. So we ran through step by step over our organizational chart, the different committees, and what each committee carries and covers, and youth council sort of picked and chose which topics meant the most to them. It seemed like they all seemed to fall under Director Roth, the community livings portfolio, except for transit, and a little bit under crime prevention for safety. But then we discussed how things work in committee meetings, who, what the role of the chair is, what the role of the committee members is, who makes motions, and how that works when the whole group comes together as to who presents. So I think it was a very excellent opportunity to learn, co-facilitated with Angela Moss-Sutherland from Community Social Development there. And yeah, it was a great meeting. I think the youth left with a little bit better idea on how to create their own governance structure and model it after city councils. So I thought it was very productive.
Great. Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. The InterCity Forum on Social Policy?
Well, this is the one I know we're all looking forward to hear. I got a bunch of notes. Actually, I drove from Wabaska on the 9th to Calgary on the 10th to be there just for the opportunity to mingle and ask a few questions with Minister Joe Cece, who was in attendance early in the morning. So I came prepared with five questions. The InterCity Forum took three of those questions and put them to action. First one, I think that is important to every municipality, is the MSI grant funding. The question on the table that was concerning most members of the council was whether or not it was, there was a commitment to keep that and at what levels. Now, Minister Cece did not say that the levels are going up. He did not say they're going down. He did not say that they're staying the same. But what he did say is, is that MSI funding will continue through till 2020-21. Now, with no commitments of the level of funding, he did say very hesitantly that they're going to undertake a very thorough review of MSI funding to see if it's actually going to the specifics of what it was meant to go to. So he was hesitant to say that, but my interpretation of his hesitation was was that perhaps he's trying to just keep it to what it's meant to, roads, streets, infrastructure. That's the important stuff that we need to create in our communities, and that's how they want to fund it. So that was really good. FCSS, he said that they've kept it at the same level, so they still have $300 million over the next three years, so $100 million over three years. We'll continue for FCSS funding. That is reflective of the increase that we received this year. That is up $75 million from the $225 million that was previously promised. So that's a good sign over the course of it all. On the question of crown prosecutors and the potential that maybe there's a lot of, I guess, cases that are falling to the cracks, and the people who are being injured through that are really the victims of crime. He said that they have had meetings with justice and that the commitment from government is that they want crowns to be more involved in bail hearings. And to support that, they have, they are increasing the amount in the budget for the victims of crime funds. So that was a good sign. Didn't necessarily say he's going to add more to crown prosecutors, but there's a lot of talk around the table that, hey, you know what? Doesn't matter what justice is saying right now. The ministry isn't saying the same thing that the crown prosecutors are saying. So he took that back and said that he would move that into further discussions. There was also talk on the carbon levy, of course. Now, his response to that is, I love his quote, I had to write it down. He said, "We're building the plane while flying it." Essentially, which is, they're trying to figure out a plan on what to do with all the carbon levy income. Currently, the energy rebates are being put back to combat poverty. And I think the public would know that from those $80 checks that we're supposed to receive quarterly or biannually or whatever it is. But he says, "Hopefully, the grid will be green." That's the government's plan by 2030. So a lot of funds from the carbon levy are going to move to greening the grid by 2030. And then he moved on to child welfare because since the carbon levy is going to be helping to combat poverty. He said that the premier is actually taking this up on her own head on the poverty plan. The Poverty Action Plan, she's heading it up. It's a cross-ministry approach to reduce poverty. Some of the work that we did on the inter-agency council on housing homelessness is reflected in this poverty plan. They're also engaging with the federal government for their plan and meeting with provincial ministers to work out a federal plan and how that works in each individual province. He said it's not solely economic. It's all about physical well-being and maximizing human capital, ensuring that everybody has a chance to thrive in each respective province. Finally, on the police funding framework, I did bring up a question, a point on that there's a disparity between urban and rural funding for police funding formula, and he did take note of it. It was getting late in the meeting, but he said that he would take that back as well to justice and to his various ministers and discuss a potential plan in the future, but that would not be reflected in this year's budget. With that being said, the only real other thing of significance we talked about, I think it's significant to Counsel McLean, but marijuana legislation, we had a presentation by AUMA and all the work that they're doing on that, trying to ensure that they have the law worked out as it should be. And they're finding that cross-country right now and in the states, the biggest issue isn't around smoking it. It's how do you catch the people who are eating it? Because edibles are becoming a new thing around here. So they're trying to find out new methods that even the states hasn't figured out a plan for yet. And that was that.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Counsel Rice?
Counsel Thiessen, in your discussion, did AUMA address the fact that those municipalities that do have the legal grow-ups are having a terrible time with odor and that in the community? And are they looking at drafting some, I guess, the design guidelines for municipalities?
Well, whoa, I was a little close to the mic there. Kelly Santarosa from AUMA did speak briefly on the whole subject. So as far as odors in municipalities that have some. some legal grow-ups, she did mention that Spruce Grove has a couple out there. There's some in St. Albert. But as far as odors, it was just very much glazed over, but she did mention it in her presentation, but nothing that they were focusing on right now. It's about how do municipalities like adjust to the legislation that could be coming forward? So that's, was the bulk of her presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Councilor Thiessen, I think you had Mighty Peace Watershed Lines?
Oh, yes. Well, two days before I met with Minister Cece, we were up in Wabaska for a two-day workshop and board meeting. The workshop was on our integrated watershed management plan, as we just received our last two working group reports on the flow regime of the Peace River, as well as groundwater availability around the Peace River. So the workshop pretty much primarily revolved around discussion and prioritizing the recommendations from the working groups and moving that forward. Currently, right now, it's focused on education. There was some discussion about bringing it forward to the public, but they wanted to have the consultant work on our recommendations for the last two working groups and then start developing the whole plan before we did a full public reveal on the integrated watershed management plan. But it was a long two days. You know, first day was about a nine-hour meeting and the second day was six, followed by a board meeting. So people were feeling pretty burnt out afterwards. But in between, we did have some educational, I guess, tours of the water and the wastewater infrastructure in Wabaska. We also met with Big Stone Creek Tribal Council around their source water protection plan, which is very interesting to note because we, we find that across the watershed, people, including municipalities like City of Grand Prairie, are hiring consultants to do the source water protection plan to ensure that we ask all the right questions and get everything done. Well, the excellent thing about Big Stone Creek Tribal Council was that they did it all within their own community, within the community of Wabaska. And they used that off of a template that they received from INAC. So it was awesome to see that they spent $0 in only time on developing a plan that most municipalities would spend anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000 to develop their own source water protection plan. I know Grand Cash spent a fair bit of money to get that done through consultants, but they showed that you can address all the issues of your watershed and your, your drinking water area on a community-based level and that templates are available, they said, through INAC, not just for Aboriginal populations, but for any municipality who wishes to, to request that. So they could do it within their own purview. So funding shouldn't be an issue. It's protecting the water is, is the real issue. Finally, we received a presentation with the previous night before we met with Big Stone Creek Tribal Council, but with one of their elders. I don't remember his last name, but I wrote down Albert. And he talked a little bit about how the land was, how the watershed was and how it's changed over the years and what really inspired them to start building a source water protection plan from the amount of pollution. He was talking about two-headed fish coming out of Wabaska Lake. He was talking about the fact that there are certain properties that have been grandfathered in. So when they flush their toilet, it goes directly into Wabaska Lake rather than into wastewater treatment, which is pretty gross and yucky. So his perspective and his storytelling were, were eye-opening for members of the board and myself included. Finally, I have to say, we, we covered a lot of ground. We decided that we're, we were approving to release all four working group reports to Hutchinson Environmental Sciences to write the plan. And again, we're not yet making that available to the public, but it should be good to go by the latest early May. And then we squeezed in our board meeting. We had, we brainstormed potential future projects that the watershed could do. We got an update on our grants received and a quick review of strategic plan. But by that time, it seemed everyone was burnt out. So I motioned that we talk strategic plan at our next board meeting at the end of March. And that was that. I got in the car and drove to Joe.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. And thanks for providing those updates. Three in a row seems like a lot, but obviously a lot of ground covered literally and figuratively in all those meetings. We have an update from Nighthawk Recreation Area Board, Councilor Redburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Four highlights from the February fifteenth board meeting. First of all, we received confirmation of a matching grant from CIP grant of 75,000 that's matched by the 75,000 that Nighthawk gleaned from the Doug Marshall Golf Tournament. Those monies will go to our rental shop expansion and our new deck and access to the chalet project. Secondly, we approved an RFP that would be submitted, actually the next day. And thirdly, Nighthawk is again hosting their sponsor appreciation snow carnival. I think we started that with that last year. And so I will put one, a copy of this in each of your MOBACs so you're aware of the free event, March first. And of course, we're a sponsor for sure. And finally, I was reminded to tell people who may be watching or listening that the snow conditions at Nighthawk are excellent. Oftentimes, people, if the weather's really warm here and the snow is going, assume that the snow conditions aren't good. They are excellent at this point. So encourage everybody to get out and enjoy Nighthawk. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. Councilor Rice, you can ask a question, by all means.
Are the Sunday morning brunches still continuing on?
Councilor Redburn?
Did you enjoy it?
Very much so.
Anyway, the answer to that question is yes. They're, they're gaining a good clientele and they're adding some revenue to Nighthawk, which is really appreciated.
And they're open to the public.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Rice and Councilor Redburn. And Councilor Redburn, please extend our thanks to Nighthawk for their support of the city's Family Day activities. I understand they've brung, they brought snowmaking equipment in to Borstad Hill and Musquesee Park. And from accounts from some people that were there, the, the sledding was perfect. And so thanks very much to Nighthawk for coming into the city and helping spread the joy of a great winter slide for Family Day.
Bump slow, right?
Apparently, that was the only downside. There wasn't enough time to create the bumps and jumps that kids like. But, you know, for liability's sake, I guess, that's, we're probably okay with it as a city. Then we'll start with council roundtable and we'll start with Councilor Tarrant first, the first one to make eye contact. So there you go.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just one event to note. I was able to take part in the Winter City shakeup in Edmonton over the last few days. And it was a great conference where we got to meet with municipalities from around the world. There was people there from Norway and Russia and Japan and Korea and lots of different places that have winter. And we were able to learn some of the best practices in terms of snow removal, in terms, terms of cultural activities, in terms of road maintenance. So there was a number of wide, wide spectrum of different things to learn. And it was great. It wasn't, wasn't the greatest attended conference, but there was definitely a lot of learning experiences.
Thanks very much, Councilor Tarrant. Councilor Redburn?
Certainly, Mayor Given. Thank you. Two things to mention. One, I brought greetings on behalf of mayor and council to the Alberta 55-plus Provincial Curling Championships. Very well done. I had the opportunity to, during my greetings, to talk about the partnership with the Curling Club and the City of Grand Prairie, which is an excellent partnership and is working very well. And both parties are proud of it. And I made the point that it's a win-win plus a win for our community. Secondly, I was able to congratulate and thank the curling community for their contribution to sports tourism in the last 15 months. We've had Grand Slam, we've had Scotties, we had this tournament, we had International Rotary. So there's been a number of tournaments, so, or spiel. So there's been a number of instances where curling community has really supported sport tourism. And as I mentioned, build community in the same with those events. And finally, I just wanted to thank staff and city who, I took grandkids to the East Link Center yesterday and enjoyed the Family Day activities that were there. And I know that Musquesee Park and Revolution Place did likewise. There were thousands of people at the East Link and I'm sure there were hundreds at the other, other facilities. So I think having access to our excellent facilities for our community is just great. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I just got one update on Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association. I wasn't able to make the meeting, but I wanted to inform council members that the GPRTA is getting geared up for the regional tourism season this year. And they had a meeting here last Friday. I wasn't able to attend family business, but some policy updates and they're thinking that they would like to be, there was a statement made at the meetings that, and they're going to be discussing it, but they may want to actually be part of some other boards, have our board members be represented on other boards. And we'll see how that works out. But that's the last I heard. So you may find them being members that are on the GPRTA board, being part of other boards associated to regional tourism in the next little while. But I can just finish up with the roundtable. I did go to the Passion at Heart event that was held on the fourteenth. Once again, it was an overwhelming success. And also, I attended the Family Day celebrations at Revolution Place and the East Link Center. I brought three of my 10 grandchildren down there and they wore me out. And, but on a positive side, they did play with children that they didn't know and they got to make up some friendships and be part of teams and just enjoyed being out there. It was a great time. And like Councilor Redburn said, there was literally hundreds of people there. So at both events. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Rice?
I attended the Brownlee LLP Emerging Trends Workshop, and I know Councilor McLean is going to speak on that. So that's all I'll say about that. And I attended the opening display, opening at the Discovery Center yesterday of the display on chuck wagons and cowboys and certainly featured of the very rich history of our stomped association as well as the tremendous role that chuck wagons and the cowboy way of life have played in our community.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yeah, I got, I had a lot of events attended and I think I've already used my amount of mic time, but I do want to talk about one event. I think it's a good educational opportunity, a learning moment, as Councilor Redburn would say. On February fifteenth, I got an emergency call to attend a flag burning ceremony. Now, I know when I first received it, I pretty much threw my phone because I was like, I'm not burning flags. That's illegal. But when I inquired a little bit more about the event, since it was an emergency that council be there, I realized that the ceremony and the discussion that we were, we were having there at Oliver's Funeral Home was more a matter of respect, not just for our country, but for the men and servicewomen who have died to, to live and for our freedoms underneath this flag. So the purpose of it is really, and this is the educational moment, is that when a flag gets to a point of disarray where it's frayed or it's damaged or muddied or whatnot, the appropriate way to dispose of it is to burn it and then bury the ashes as according to what we've done in the past with our different military servicemen. This came via Mo Morgan from, from the Legion, that he brought this forward to Lisa Peters at Oliver's Funeral Home, because normally they just throw them in the crematorium and then burn them all en masse. So we were supposed to be there for a ceremony, but in the end, it was more of a discussion on what are we going to do with these flags? And to that regard, I gave greetings on behalf of the city and the mayor for council being there. There was many servicemen and women in attendance, people from the RCMP and fire departments. One in particular, James Kostick, he had collected all the flags that Oliver's had shipped over to him. And there's 92 flags in total that he spent burning in his backyard. But he said what he noticed was, as they got, started burning these flags, was that a lot of the flags nowadays are made out of nylon. And back in the day, the flags were made of cloth. So it was easy to burn as nylon is a petroleum product and just pretty much turns into hard plastic once you incinerate it. So he said it took him about four and a half hours of atrocious smell in his backyard burning this stuff. And what that led to was a discussion with the Parks Department about what are we going to do with this? It's not very environmentally friendly with these nylon things. So coming to a committee near you soon, whichever one applies, is the discussion that between the fire department and parks of what we do with these flags. And parks says that they have an area of land currently available at the cemetery where they'll drill a couple holes down into the ground and we'll just stuff them in. And every February fifteenth Flag Day, we'll do the ceremony rather than burn the nylon and pollute the environment. We'll find a proper service to dispose of these flags. So I look forward to that coming forward to committee. And I was very appreciative of the lessons learned. And I hope you learned a thing or two from this flag burning ceremony as I did.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to report, I guess, there should have been further on, but some sad news from South Peace Regional Archives. After the last council meeting, Catherine Auger passed away. And she was very big on the social media archives for the archives. And from within the group of the strong volunteers, which helps our city in all areas of volunteerism, is that she'd be sadly missed and with her constant support of the archives and her friendship very much. So I should have reported that a little earlier, but I, I thought I put it in my roundtable. So, so I'm going to move on to February 10th. I ended up going to the grand opening celebration for St. Mary's Catholic School in Beaver Lodge on behalf of the city. I was coming back into the city, going to go to St. Catherine's grand opening. And I had a child that was throwing up, so I missed that one. So sorry if some of you were there, but I had a sick child. So the other one was, as Councilor Rice said, we attended the Emerging Trends. Couple things I want to speak to. You can go into all the sections of what they're going to change from IDPs being optional to mandatory. But some of the big ones on this is where you can sit and talk. And there was, I think, over 400 people from remote communities, the mayor vets in, different councils of Woodland. There was four councils from the county of Grand Prairie. There was lots of communications. And besides Emerging Trends, you sit around a table and let's say the one I was sitting around was Woodlands County. And nobody give the city a white court and 10% of linear assessment. That's over a million. And total amount, about 3.5 million a year. So White Court's not a city, it's a town. So they get 3.5 million from Woodland County. So you learn all kinds of nice things when you go to these events. Another thing is I'd like to speak to, before I finish, Councilor Thiessen was talking about marijuana. I'm very proud of the federal government that's looking into it. And the lady chairing this used to be a federal minister, Anne McClellan, and it's in very, very good hands. And I believe when they come out with their results, hoping for the next election, we will have marijuana legalized in Canada. Very proud of that. Finally, to finish up is on February 15th and 16th, Councilor, well, no, I got two things. Councilor Rice was speaking to Emerging Trends and I kind of went off on the marijuana. And it was really good event. And I just want to, I'm going to table this to legislation, Emerging Trends. And some of the stuff that's in here is for reading. Give it to legislation. I think they'll find it handy and hopefully later put it in the back room of councillors. Sometimes always digital, don't get to the point where you want to look. And it's nice to have a little bit of paperwork. So I will be tabling this. And to finish off, I, I'm going to do say kudos to a director recently, and all directors need kudos, but to Koji, Community Growth, for a lot of good news in the community lady about transportation, solar power, different seminars we go, we're being approached by, what did you do? How did you do it? So I want to say, Koji, thank you. But also finish off Revolution Place, the difference it's been making recently. And just some of the seminars happening and I know, I think other councillors being approached. I know I have been, being asked, what are you doing up there? And good, very positive feedback. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Logan?
Thank you. Just two items that I want to mention. The first was on February 9th, along with two community volunteers who are quite experienced with development appeal boards, and myself sat down with the DAB. And it's a quasi-judicial sort of proceeding. And it's of course, open that people could, could attend them. I don't think I've ever seen that actually happen. But kudos to that team. I also want to mention what Helen said about the chuck wagon exhibit on February 19th. Two things to point out from that. One was that this was one of the first, it's not the first, display that was largely created by Charles Taus, who's our new, I've lost the word, curator, that's what, and doing, settling in really well and doing a fine job. And of course, our own Bernie Benson, who acted as hostess for the people coming in and having a good time reminiscing about all of the time she participated in the chuck wagon, the festivities at the chuck wagon races. And so kudos to her. the festivities at the chuck wagon races. And so kudos to her.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I had an opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of the mayor and council at the official opening of the Saint Catherine's School in the Royal Oaks area. Councillor Radburn was also in attendance. And a very, very nice school and great presentation. They had a mural that had every student and teacher had had an opportunity to make, that they made into a larger mural, and it was quite a piece on display there. As well, I had the opportunity to attend the Big Hearts for Big Kids event at the Entrec Center, the annual fundraiser in its eighth year. This year had its biggest year ever, raising over two-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars with proceeds going to the Sunrise Youth House. So that was a great event. So kudos to the volunteers and the group that puts that on. As well, I brought greetings on behalf of mayor and council to the Passionate Heart Service Awards. Awards were handed out to very deserving people in the social services industry. And it was a very well-attended event on Valentine's Day. With, as councillor Tarrant had mentioned, I attended the Winter City Shake-Up Conference. Really enjoyed the tourism aspect of it. They had discussions on things like the ICE Hotel in Norway and different things. I think it's sort of a pre-warning for administration that there's lots of things coming from councillor Tarrant and I. Follow-up to councillor Radburn's comments in regards to Nighthawk, I had the opportunity, on a personal note, to watch my youngest son race in the edge-to-edge race this weekend at Nighthawk, as councillor Radburn had mentioned. Although we don't have a lot of snow in town, Nighthawk has done a great hill of making snow this year. And a combination with the cold weather making snow and the snow they had, the conditions are excellent. And the hill is actually quite sheltered from the wind, so it's been quite warm out there. It's quite enjoyable for either tubing or skiing. I encourage people to get out there. Or as councillor Rice mentioned, the brunch, when I was in the lodge during the race, the brunch was very well-attended, so that seems to be quite a popular event. And last but not least, I also attended the Brownlee Emerging Trends, just at a different location than councillor Rice and a McLean. And found there was a lot of useful information there, a lot of information. But for those of you who have an opportunity to attend the next session, I would encourage you to do so. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Just want to thank the council members who brought greetings on behalf of the city. I was out of the city for about a week and certainly appreciate council members stepping in and picking up some of those events. So my appreciation to all of you who did that. And I just wanted to cover two events. On February sixteenth, councillor Clayton and I and city manager and economic development manager Brian Glaven attended the first meeting of the Tri-Municipal Industrial Development Steering Committee. This is the partnership between the City of Grand Prairie, the MD of Greenview and the County of Grand Prairie to work towards increased industrial development in the MD of Greenview that would have a return and benefit to city taxpayers and county taxpayers as well. So the initial stages of that, working on the terms of reference, and councillor Clayton will be able to share with council members as well how we represent the city's interests in that startup phase of this initiative. And then today, I had an opportunity to attend the Grand Prairie Regional College Presidents' Awards. They held their gala event recognizing outstanding college volunteers, distinguished alumni and other special presentations. And I just, there were, every year, there obviously were the honorees. But this year, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that stood out for me. And it was shared that the first class at GPRC was sixty-six students. It was the first group that enrolled in the first-ever year of courses at Grand Prairie Regional College. And I doubt that they would have imagined today that they would have seen an alumni who started their time at GPRC, was a student, went on to get their law degree and came back to practice in Grand Prairie and eventually wound up being a judge in Grand Prairie. So Grand Prairie Regional College has started the post-secondary careers of local residents who ended up becoming, not only serving the community through the law as a lawyer, but also now serving in our community as a judge. And so Judge Hogestall was recognized with a distinguished alumni award. And he made that point. He said very specifically and intentionally that if it wasn't for GPRC, his life could have taken a very different path because attending post-secondary outside of Grand Prairie just would not have been a possibility for him at that time in his life. And so it was, I think it was really amazing, that connection between the community leaders who saw the need, although others might have said it was sort of reaching to have a post-secondary, a college in Grand Prairie at the time when they opened. That first class of sixty-six students went on to get a judge in Grand Prairie. And then also, there was another person who was younger in their career, but a veterinary doctor who's currently practicing in Fairview. She's just early in her career. Her first years were at Grand Prairie Regional College before moving on to vet school and to the University of Saskatoon, I believe. But again, another fine example of Peace Region resident who started their academic career at Grand Prairie Regional College, went on to do other things at other institutions and come back to Grand Prairie and to this region to serve. And I thought it was just a tremendous recognition of those people who've gone on to do great things, but also the important role that Grand Prairie Regional College plays in our region and in our community. And it was also excellent to hear Judge Hogestall from the stage publicly call for degree granting status for the institution. It was nice. There were NDP MLAs in the audience, and so it was good to hear him do that. But to cite himself as an example of why that sort of thing should be considered. And it was just great to share in that celebration of the college community. With that, I think we'll call our meeting adjourned.